Chairman Harrison, Ms. Teresa Henry, present. Ms. Callie Hale, present. Mr. Matt Wright, superintendent of.
Present.
We do have a quorum. Mr. Superintendent, would you like to lead us through our agenda?
Certainly. Next on the agenda is the opportunity for public comment.
Would anybody from the public like to speak?
How did y'all know that?
If he would come to the podium and name an address, please.
I live at Arlington, 9584 Pine Point Drive. And I'm here tonight for the same thing that I've been here for in the last few weeks. I want to discuss, not with Dr. Horrell anymore, I want to speak to the elected officials about Lakeland Elementary through heat and air units. Want to know specifically, have you read this report, environmental report? This occurred when the school was under the jurisdiction of Shelby County Schools. We have had a repeated problem of leaking at Lakeland Elementary. I'm extremely concerned about the mold. This report, if you take it and you read it, you will find it was not handled properly. Shelby County higher had some of their own employees just come in and pick the mold up and clean it up and expose it to some books. They did not follow EPA guidelines. They did not test the books. They found mold in the vents, they didn't test the vents. They just tested the air quality of the room, okay? What I'm upset about is, this happened, the first time was in March of 2014, they came back in April of 2014. The first time, the way that they did this was they came in with an infrared camera and wherever there were wet spots in the ceiling, that's where they went to and replaced the ceiling tile. Well, you got a leak roof, let's say we did here, and all we do is replace these ceiling tiles in here, we haven't taken care of the leak, we haven't taken care of the moisture problem, and that's what causes mold. Mold grows when you get humidity at 60% or higher. The EPA said that what we needed to do was test and make sure that we did not allow the humidity to get above 60%. Did anybody do that? No. They came back a month later, they ran another air quality test, I have no idea what this caused, okay?
I'm not going to just wrap it up.
I am, I am. And it's true that it was, I would not use the word trace, because trace is not in here. We will find that there were two or three different types of mold in here, but I'm concerned that the heat and air units were not inspected. And they're usually not on in sometimes in March and in April. Remember, this is 2014, not 2015, where we had such long wear. So if I do have this, I would love it if y'all would take it, read it, see if you have the exact same concerns that I do. I sent Dr. Horrell several questions, but I feel like his hands are pretty much tied in some way, and I know most of y'all have kids in this school too. I won't talk too long into this, I'm not up here because I really like y'all, I want to be up here every time.
We're so disappointed, Ms. Hale.
I do like it, but I really would like it to stay in here. It concerns me that we're not scheduled to replace this roof until next year.
If you would like to leave the reports in Ms. Milhouse, and the board members have an opportunity to pick them from them if they so desire.
Thank you, I'll be back next month.
All right, we always look forward to it. It's a pleasure, thank you. Any other public comment tonight? Hearing none, next item.
All right, next is the report section, starting with the chairman's report.
I really don't have anything to add to my report from last week. We are rapidly closing in on another school year. Echo that what I'm saying will be part of the superintendent's report is that I'm very, very pleased that we are, it looks like we're going to come in under budget approximately $600,000, to be able to put that in reserve, which I think is just completely and totally remarkable for our first year. There was a lot of concern if we could do this at all, and it's truly remarkable that we're able to do it at that level, and we're able to contribute that much in reserves after one year. That concludes my report.
Next is the TLN representative update.
I don't have a report, but I'm just going to update something real quickly. Last work session, we discussed the policy 6.405, and I sort of jokingly said something about, I wonder why an exception was made for pancreatic insufficiency. I don't have the answer to that yet, but I had emailed somebody. Mr. Chairman would put it very eloquently, and so that would be a great question for TLN rep to ask. So the TLN rep has to be asked, and hopefully by next work session, we'll have some sort of answer on it.
Very good, thank you.
Next is the ACS Arlington Community Schools Board liaison update.
The last Arlington meeting was on Tuesday, June 23rd. I sent out my notes to all the board members, as well as to Ms. Milhouse for going to school board records. Their enrollment verification, new student enrollment will be on August 4th. So basically, the enrollment verification is for the students that enrolled early in the spring. They just need to show up at their school to pick up their course schedules and find out who their teachers will be for the next full year. New students will have to go through the enrollment process on that date as well. Testing dates will be posted by July 15th. There were hard copies, and I took pictures with my phone of those copies, of the in-service schedules and materials that were presented for the ACS school system. Pacing guides, in the past, the districts used the Shelby County School System Guides. I did this last year, for the 15th, 16th school year, ACS will put the system and creating new pacing guides for the two districts. That's a great cooperative agreement where we've been working together. STEM students, they are starting to accept applications now for their STEM program, and they're introducing one-to-one devices, starting with one team on the sixth grade level, and they're introducing a team at a time, and gradually building their one-to-one devices that way. Businesses, the business on the meeting was policy 1.403 agenda, they removed their timed agenda wording, 3.602, workers' compensation, they added this line out to theirs, which I thought was pretty, I wonder if something we might want to look at doing as well. It said, "Willful misconduct related to workplace safety or an employee's willful failure or refusal to use the safety devices, and these actions contribute to or cause an on-the-job injury and may exclude or limit the force liability," and it is referenced in TCA code. So we may want to look into that, Mr. Superintendent. Then they gave approval to the superintendent according to remove or discard our surplus outdated textbooks, since they are looking at replacing their social studies, their social studies books.
Is it a real quick meeting? Those are always nice?
Thank you, Ms. Henry.
Yeah, thank you for going to our meeting then, there's.
That's right.
I appreciate that. Next is the superintendent's update and the financial report. I did a fairly thorough update at our meeting, and we can go ahead and have a few things to add. We are now currently staffed as of Friday afternoon, so that's our late, currently fully staffed, so we have one teacher available, sorry, one teacher position open last Monday, and that hasn't been filled, so we're excited about that, got somebody really terrific. So we've got a great group of new and returning teachers, and I'm just really excited about folks that are literally working with us, a lot of enthusiasm. Ms. Hughes has completed two rounds of substitute training for our new and returning subs. As you guys know, we decided to do our substitutes in-house, it worked really well last year, and got a pool of subs that we were familiar with and comfortable with, and have pretty much dedicated to Lakeland schools, and had a lot of those come back, and got a great group of additional ones to kind of round it off, so we can make sure that we've got running up subs. And the sub to their training, with all the things that teachers have to be nervous about, teachers never more nervous than the day before they happen to be out in their classroom, as you would experience, and that's been exciting. Let everybody know, I will be appearing along with the other Shelby County, both municipal and Shelby County School Superintendent, at the House Education Committee's Summer Review next Thursday, I'm sorry, on Thursday. And basically, they're just going over several items, and they want a status update of the newly created Shelby County LDA, this is the agenda item, and we just got to introduce that, an invitation to go to Nashville and sit in on that committee, and I guess answer questions from committee members that may have questions about our school system, what's going on there. Our in-service agendas are in place, thanks to Ms. Lockhart and Ms. Hughes, who've been working together on those. We are working collaboratively again with the other municipalities on specialty in-service for areas like special ed and maps, the art and music and PE, those kind of things. And then they're setting service in place for attendance operators regarding transportation and planning, for our shared services coordinators, do a lot of that, training as well, so just another great example of collaboration right now. Just so everybody knows, the Health Trust Committee, which I'm the chair, and it's made up by representatives from participating municipal school systems and municipalities, will vote Wednesday on contracts for our own employee wellness clinics, and we feel like this is an opportunity to add more value to our employee benefits. We will have two clinics, so assuming that the contracts are approved, which we expect them to be, one will be in the Corryville area, and one in the Bartlett area, that could actually be called the Lakeland area, it's so close to Lakeland, it is in Bartlett. It would be very convenient for our employees, and this will be an opportunity for our employees and their dependents to essentially have primary care services offered through our health plan. So there's a lot of excitement about that, and hope to get that kicked off at some point in the fall. Our new accounting specialist will start on Monday, so we're excited to bring her on board. And I can tell you just an update on the land acquisition, that representatives from the Jones Group and the Lakeland School System Group are both working very hard, and the only thing I can say for sure is that we are really, really, really driving to have a contract to bring back before you, before the end of July. That's the state's old, that we're working towards, and we hope to be mapping that we're working out the details right now. And I did want to add, just to have some implication, Mr. Chairman, for the agenda, we found out today, the superintendent's conference will be, the annual superintendent's conference will be September 13th through the 16th in Gatlinburg, and that conflicts with our scheduled September meeting, which we were going to do the week, we're only going to have one meeting and do it the week after Labor Day weekend, so we may want to take a look at rescheduling that if we're desiring.
Mr. Superintendent, if you'll remind me, we get to an agenda, we'll add that item for discussion and possible action.
All right. On my financial report, I really gave probably the most important part of the financial update last week in terms of how we finish off with this little year. But you do have, and it's posted to the website, our June expenditures and the summary report from where we stood at the end of June. There are still just a few little, you know, bills and things that we're still paying that were from the 15th, this week, but they could look at, like you said, we expect to start with a very healthy reserve, about 8.5% of our perjury operating budget, so a very, very comfortable position to be in. That concludes my reports.
Very good, any questions for the superintendent? Hearing none, next item.
Next item is the consent agenda.
I would like to take one item out of order, just to eliminate any confusion. State law requires that the first business item, if you're going to discuss a superintendent's contract, the first business item, I'm not sure if the consent agenda would qualify as a business item or not, but if there's not any objection from the board, we'll go ahead and do action item number one, which is discussion action on contract extension before the consent agenda, to eliminate any possible confusion. Did I lose everybody there? So let me recap, because I don't feel like I said that well. State law requires the, any discussion or action on a superintendent's contract to modify be the first business item. Whether or not the consent agenda is a business item, I guess, is up for discussion, but to eliminate any confusion, I would like to make this in front of the consent agenda. Does that make sense? Any objection to that? Hearing none, we will move to action item number one, Mr. Superintendent.
Action item number one is discussion action on contract extension for Superintendent Dr. W. Edward Horrell III, which is me. Sponsored by Kevin Floyd.
You said there's no confusion about that.
Thank you, Dr. W. Edward Horrell III. This was mine, I brought it before the board. You know, I feel like Dr. Horrell has exceeded our expectations at every level. State law only allows you to have a super contract up to four years. We are a year and a half, we only had a three-and-a-half-year agreement, and we are a year and a half into that agreement now, so we have the ability to extend that contract for additional two years. I'm recommending that, and we'll make a motion for that, and we'll, if I can get a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and a discussion, I'd like to open up to the board for any discussion on that matter.
Is there any discussion?
Since I wasn't in the work session, I would just like to say that, you know, I seconded the, I agree wholeheartedly that we need to move forward with this. I think Dr. Horrell has done an amazing job this past year and a half. The staff, what few or many that they may be, they all really look up to him and respect him, and that's, to me, is utmost, shows his leadership skills. His vision for our system has been amazing, I've been very happy with that. He's, one of the things that impressed him when we were doing interviews was that he didn't look, he didn't look five years down the road, he looked 10 years, 15 years down the road, 20 years, you know, so he saw Lakeland and the potential that our school system had, and I just have to say, thank you for all your hard work, because you have more, many, many hats during this inaugural year, so.
Any further discussion?
I'll add to it, men typically are not the best people to say thank you to somebody, but thank you to Dr. Horrell. He knows how I feel, and I think he knows how the rest of the board feels. He did go above and beyond the call of duty, he did do things that many other superintendents are not asked to do, especially during the campaign. Some uncomfortable moments, for sure, doing presentations and discussing things that, again, are typically outside the scope of a superintendent's job description, so very pleased. I said it then, and I don't back down from it now, when we did our interviews, for us, for Lakeland, I thought it was easily the best candidate, and just the right guy, and I stand by that, and I think we've made the best decision, and I think the results have proven that out, so I'm happy to win my support.
Ms. Hale?
Yes, I have a few things to say. Teresa mentioned that, and we all have talked about this before up here, that Dr. Horrell wears many hats. Well, I want to tell you what those hats are. He not only is in charge of the budget, which he came in way under, he is the bookkeeper for all of the school system, he is the, he files the federal financial paperwork every week, he's the basic accountant for the school system, he's in charge of all HR, including the training and development of staff, he is the maintenance staff, the maintenance guy at school is, has something over and beyond what's the little things that come about, he's got to take care of that. He is the chairman, as he said, of the Health Trust Committee, he has faithfully attended more than 12, I know a lot more than 12, community meetings in the last year, Lakeland Lines Club, PTA meetings, and all the many meetings we've had informing the community this past year on the prep project. He makes himself available to the community, he has a great attitude consistently, and even on the teacher survey, that was part of our evaluation this past year, he, it showed that he, his leadership was what changed the culture of Lakeland Elementary, and that says a whole lot coming from the teachers. And then he was able to put $600,000 into reserves, that is a lot. And not only do I think we need to extend this contract, but I would like to discuss whenever it's available and whenever time permits, that he give a bonus. So I don't know what y'all would say to that, but that's what I think he needs to have.
Why don't we do it, take those up as two separate items, we'll vote on the extension, and you can make a motion for a bonus, and then we'll have discussion on that. Any further discussion on the extension? So, right this contract through June 30th of 2019, is that correct? June 30th, it's an extension through June 30th of 2019. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Sorry, term of contract, we're only discussing.
That's right, the subject to, subsequent motion may have to say. So, discussion on this item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Dr. Horrell, for your hard work and service.
Well, I want to thank the board publicly as well for your support, and certainly for the kind of comments, and just for all the things that you did to get things up and running before I came into the picture, you had things up, as well as the could-be takeover, but just consistently, you guys and sort of Laura Erickson as well, they were supportive, and also available, and given feedback and direction and suggestions, I appreciate it, Greg, so thank you.
Ms. Hale, would you like to make a motion?
I have made a motion that we do have to discuss more.
It can be discussed slash action on.
Discuss slash action on, I suppose, the bonus you've got, Horrell.
I believe, let's, just so we don't run into any procedural issues, let's add this item to the agenda, any objection to adding this item to the agenda? I think you can probably follow to paragraph one anyway, but, well, any objection to adding this item? Hearing none, we will have a discussion slash action, and the bonus for Dr. Horrell has been added to our agenda. Ms. Hale, you have the floor.
Well, I already told you that, thank you.
So, tell us your motion, please.
Just did.
You'd like to make a motion for Dr. Horrell to have a bonus, is there a second? We have, I'll make, I'll second the motion. Okay, discussion, is there any discussion on this item? Like, what's the dollar?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the obvious question.
Do you agree with that?
I would think that, for the reasons that you've stated, budget, all the roles that these play, it's coming under budget, I think exceeding our expectations of relates to changing the culture, I think that a bonus of $5,000 would be in order for that. I would even go so far as to say that, you know, should certain benchmarks be met, for example, if we were to be named a reward school, an additional bonus of $5,000 would be in order, but that would have to be, that would obviously be determined by the state and not us, so that would be a third party, that designation would come into play. You know, that would happen at that time. So I'll make that as an amendment to Ms. Hale's motion, is there a second?
Essentially what we're saying, yes.
We have a second on amendment, okay.
Essentially what we're saying is basically just a general bonus, and then a rewards-based bonus determined by the state, essentially, I mean, obviously, we would have to vote to approve, but it'd have to hit a metric. Number two, do we know, and I'm not saying this would influence my decision at all, but do we know whether other superintendents have received a bonus the first year?
Yes.
I know Tammy Mason has.
Yeah, I knew that.
I believe, and I don't, I'm certain, Ms. Mason at Arlington has, I believe, is it Dr. Stevens?
He is almost Dr. Stevens.
At Bartlett has, and I know Corryville and Jarmont Town have awarded bonuses as well. Is that correct, Dr. Horrell? And I think those dollar amounts, for most of them, are $20,000 and up. Does that sound right?
I don't know.
We don't know, right.
Well, I thought so, I thought everybody else had received one, and I know the argument that we'll hear, and I'll go ahead and put it out there, is too many, Dr. Horrell's compensated very well, and we only have one school. But, with that said, and I do agree with the public, but with that said, I don't think, and I would include myself in this, before I was elected to the school board, the general public doesn't understand how much work goes in to running, even a one-school district in five, it's really more work, because you have such a small staff. Because of that, I'm agreeable to the terms that Chairman Paul laid out.
Last week, we talked about how teachers need to have incentives, and we need to motivate them to do their best work and to learn, and, you know, we talked about compensating them or whatever, I mean, why not the superintendent? We want him to do his best and continue to strive to make this even better than we are now, so, want him, that's just a good way to do it.
Ms. Henry, do you have any thoughts?
I agree with everything everyone has said here. If we expect, what we expect to give to our teachers, we should also be able to give to our superintendent. You know, he is out there on the front line, day in, day out, you know, leading the system. Any complaint there is, it goes straight to this man, whether it's from, there's no toilet paper, you know, here, or, you know, we need napkins or tissues or whatever, or hey, our roof leaks, I'm sorry, Lou.
It's okay.
You know, so, he gets the brunt from the simplest thing to the most difficult things. You know, part of that is, his job is being superintendent. But, in, in all of that, he doesn't have the chief of staff of maintenance that maybe you'll cut that from underneath them, you know, keep some of that, it's a buffer. You don't have the chief financial officer, you know, as a buffer to help with some of the financial questions, so I don't have an issue with it, you know, because he, he is that buffer, as well as the final say. Yeah, and he needs to be compensated, you know, for the additional workloads that he does carry with him.
I agree, I believe, you know, that this is, and not to mention, there's only a handful of student, superintendent's that had ever, and I mean ever, created a school system from beginning to end, and that's, that in and of itself is a very significant accomplishment. And it's funny, you mentioned toilet paper, one of my nightmares about a year ago today was the first day of school, we'd get there and there wouldn't be toilet paper. I don't know why that's, that's a little weird, that's a good story, but it's a little weird. But, all things considered, it went off without a hitch. I mean, it really, really did, and Ms. Lockhart has a lot to do with that, she's in the room tonight as well, but it went off without a hitch, and the amount of, the amount of work and effort to pull that off really can't be overstated. And it's true, we do only have one school, so it may not have been as hard as others, but it's still hard, and it was still a lot of work, and it was still a heck of an accomplishment. And we get to do it with less resources than other school systems have. So I support Paul Arling, I'm all for the $5,000 bonus for work performed that exceeded our expectations, and his evaluation reflected that as well. And then, another bonus, should we become a reward school of $5,000, which would ultimately be determined by the state.
Do they have a certain time?
The last week of July, and I think they released it August 3rd.
I thought it was in the fall.
Yeah.
They're, they're a reward school, they're known in August.
Okay. So, regardless.
And just for the public's purposes, do you want to kind of give an overview of what it means to be a reward school, like what kind of criteria do you have to get?
Yes, a reward school is essentially that you're in the top 5% of schools in the state on either achievement or growth, or both, they have three reward designations, one is for achievement, one is for growth, means the way you move students from one level to the next, and then you can also get a, kind of a super reward if you got those, you know, designation.
And let's be honest, it will be hard for us to achieve that, it's a, it's a high benchmark to hit, so if we do.
That was my point, trying to make that, it's not something easy to do.
Right.
There's not many that do it, and so it's not just a, some low-hanging fruit bonus that qualifies schools.
Especially when you're already a high-performing school, you know, Lakeland is, that makes it even more difficult to execute such types of stuff.
Part already set by.
All right, well, so technically, the amendment is before us, so let's, is there any further discussion on that amendment? Hearing none, all in favor of passing the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the amendment passes, we're back on the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item.
I think I appreciate the recognition and the confidence moving forward to the extension of the, of the law, so thank you.
So I think we're moving back to the consent.
Back to the consent agenda.
Is there anything that anybody would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, pass the consent agenda, say aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda, next item. next item.
Next item is presentation on facilities master plan process. At this point, I had the opportunity to introduce Nedra Jones, who was a part of it. If you'll slide back from the. If I can walk up here and make sure, I'll put you on the spot.
Yes.
See, he's also on IT.
Take just a minute to warm up, but of all the things that we did, you know, this time a year ago, just over a year ago, one of the things we discussed on shared services with other municipal school systems and what that would look like, and it is, as I've said many times, it has been, in my mind, just an absolute success. We got access to some of the most talented professionals in Shelby County Schools, and in some cases beyond, that are now working on behalf of all six of the school systems. And as I said back then, as far as like the school system goes, essentially, for the price of a teacher and benefits, we got access to, now, I think it's 20 employees that do highly specialized things like the planning that Nedra Jones does. She is a consummate professional. She has tons of experience, not just in planning, but school planning specifically. So, when she talks to Jim Atkins at our city planner, he acknowledges, well, I don't know, I don't know, school planning, you'd have to talk to Nedra about that. And she shares that with us. She helps us with our projections, which impacts our budget, which impacts our hiring. And it's just, just been monumental in all of the planning and the work that we've done so far. And when I needed numbers, whether it be to talk about Lakeland Prep or to have conversations with information about, you know, enrollment projections, Nedra has that information, and she's typically spot on. So.
Trust me.
Thank you for being here.
She was Shelby County, yeah.
My name was Shelby County.
Yeah. So, at this point, she's going to talk about the five-year capital improvement plan, which I've said before, the other school systems did that during the last school year, and we're going to initiate it at the start of this year. And you can explain what that means, because it's a different meaning than a lot of people may even assume.
Thank you very much, Dr. Horle. It is a pleasure to finally be here with me all of you. This is my first time, I believe, attending one of your board meetings, so it's a pleasure. Thank you. I'm going to be very brief with the presentation. Hopefully, that will leave some time for questions. If you have any, I'll do my best to answer them. If not, I'm sure Superintendent Horle has some answers for you. But, I hope you guys received this outline. Did they receive a copy?
I did not.
Okay, that's okay. We're going to talk from this. This is sort of the organizational structure of the capital improvement plan, or facilities master plan. It can be referred to either way. And I'm just going to walk you through this and explain to you the process we undergo to develop a plan, and the components and everything that's involved, and sort of the things that we look at, so we have some understanding of what the CIP is. Some of you've probably heard of the capital improvement plan, or worked with them before. It's a little bit different in dealing with schools in terms of the things that we look at. But, this is the organizational structure, and I want to start first by just sort of talking about the CIP, what it is, the purpose it serves, and why it's important for school districts to have a plan. So, in terms of, you know, what is the plan? It's a long-range, comprehensive planning document that looks at a lot of information. It's a compilation of information on your student populations, programs, and facilities. And the purpose is to get us to think about the future of our school district, to think in terms of how we're going to accommodate existing populations as well as future populations within the physical space that we have now, or that we will need. So, you're thinking on a much broader or longer horizon. Dr. Horle, you referred to a five-year plan. Some districts may have a 10-year plan or a 20-year plan. That's up for discussion when we start to meet to determine what's best suited for this district. I tend to believe that a shorter horizon period is a little bit better when you're having a lot of, I don't want to say turnover, but a lot of changes are happening quickly. And with Lakeland being a fairly new school district, and we know there's some pending changes in relationship with Arlington, it may be wise to look at it on a shorter horizon. And then, in terms of why it's important to have a CIP plan, there are a number of reasons as to why it's important, but these are just some that I thought were sort of at the top of the list. The first thing it does is that it provides a continuous, ongoing process for evaluating the changing needs within the school community. Ongoing, it may be a five-year or 10-year plan, but you're looking at those components on an annual basis. You should be. It allows us to develop a system of priorities for our programs and facilities. We actually go through and talk about, okay, what takes precedence or should take precedence over something else in terms of these sort of physical improvement to a building or a program change. Then, it also allows us to make more effective decisions regarding the types, amounts, and quality of new and existing school facilities. And last but certainly not least is that it allows us to plan strategically the financing of all of our capital dollars and capital investments. So, the process occurs in three phases. It's first with the data collection, data analysis, and data integration. And what we're doing in this three-phase process is we're looking at the three main components of the plan. The first being enrollment or student populations, the second being programs or curriculum and instruction, and then finally, the third component is facilities. So, when we look at enrollment, this is what I like to say, we're looking at, you know, who are we as a district? In terms of educational demographics, beyond race, ethnicity, gender, who are we in terms of grade level, K-12, special needs population, English language learners, advanced learners, pre-K, preschool population? Who are we now? Who are we going to be, say, in a few years? And so, we're looking at that in terms of current. We also look at it historically, but we also look at it in terms of projected enrollment. So, that's the enrollment piece. The programs piece, educational adequacy, this is where I ask a question, okay, so what's missing from our programs? Okay? So, we're looking at all of the policies that we have in place, the operations and our philosophy as it relates to elementary, middle school, high school program, special needs, or any sort of special programs. Also, perhaps looking at programs outside of academics and athletics and things like that that impact the experience that students have in the district. One other thing that's important when we start to look at this piece is competitiveness. And with Lakeland pretty much being one district and perhaps one school district and perhaps a two-school system, you're going to really want to look at your competitiveness with other districts, how you compare in terms of the programs you offer. Larger districts, we tend to compare the programs among the grade groupings. So, if you're, if you had two or three elementary schools, we would be looking at what programs we're offering. Are we, you know, being, is there equity across the schools and the programs that we provide in each of those schools? But, I think for Lakeland, you're looking at how you're going to be competing with Arlington and, say, Bartlett School System and perhaps Millington School System. And then, finally, the last piece is the facilities. This is where we look at the suitability of space to support the students and the programs. Okay? I like to call this, you know, okay, so what's broken within our buildings? And I think during the public comment period, we had someone speak specifically about what's been happening in Lakeland Elementary School. This phase of the process allows us to go in and conduct a complete audit of the space. So, we're looking at, not only are we looking at the physical classroom space and how the rooms are designed and how they're used, we're looking at all of the structural and mechanical components of a building to determine, yes, what needs to be repaired versus what needs to be replaced. Property inventory, you know, with us having one school building here, you would think, oh, okay, you know, we just have one school building. But, it's important to look at things like the needs, making sure that they're correct, boundary descriptions are, have been appropriately defined. So, that's where we may call upon the attorney to say, go back and look at those documents, make sure we're okay there. Again, the consent, the conditions is just a full-on audit or assessment of the facilities. And then, the needs assessment piece sort of gets into, okay, what are our, what are our priorities? What do we need to, what do we actually need to place in the budget, which is the next thing. This is what comes out of the plan. It's an actual five-year or 10-year budget where you have spelled out, these are the projects, facility projects, or your programming projects that need to be included in the budget. Okay? So, that pretty much wraps up, that pretty much wraps up my presentation. The next steps for us would be a committee being formed. The superintendent would identify what staff or personnel needs to be involved in the process. We've established a meeting schedule. And then, the process itself takes about six to eight months. It can take that length of time because we have to allow, of course, the, the school year to start, and then we're able to collect the data. That is the data collection process. Go through the data analysis, the integration of all of that, and then start to prioritize what needs to go into the CIP. Now, I realize that the middle school piece has sort of already, a lot of this has already been done with the middle school. So, the plan would be to sort of integrate that information along with everything that we're going to be collecting and researching about the elementary school, and sort of bring all of that information into one complete document. Okay?
Very good. Thank you.
So, any questions or?
Any questions for Ms. Jones? Hearing?
I'll just make a quick statement. I know that, as you said, a lot of this work has already been done over the past year. Dr. Horle, do you think we'll, with the work that we've done in the past year, do you think, or do you envision us putting something into a document per se that would be available for the public?
Yes, and in fact, there's some great examples out there from the other school systems. What you wind up with, and I don't want to speak for you, Ms. Jones, but what you wind up with is, I think, it's kind of like when we did the emergency response plan. We start with, we wind up with a base document that includes information both about, you know, the future of middle school, you know, as much as appropriate, but also more comprehensive information probably about the elementary school, so that as we get capital applications, because my understanding is a lot of what the other systems have done is kind of work on projections of money that they might get from Shelby County Schools. And in that way, as that money comes in, we've already kind of made the decisions on what are the priorities, particularly for Lakeland Elementary School. Obviously, we're going to start with a new building. That money is being allocated separately. It's quite a bit more money for the middle school. But, as we have money come in or have needs arise, we can prioritize them for the elementary school. So, we wind up with a document that we can then update. How often do systems update? Every year, every two years, every?
Yearly.
Yearly?
So, yearly basis, you're looking at the student population piece, of course, and assessing what changes have occurred there. You should have someone, let's say, your main informant or someone of that nature going through and assessing, you know, the building, if you state that leaks and all, things happen all the time. So, it should be done annually. And sometimes, it may require that you make adjustments to your budget. You know, some things, you know, things change.
We had a conversation, and, you know, part of the question was, with all the work we've done, you know, essentially in the last year, sort of a year plus, you know, what's the best way to frame this? But, when we started looking at several things that we haven't done, kind of the prioritizing of projects at Lakeland Elementary, the program audit, is that the right word? Or the facilities audit?
Facilities audit.
Where Nedra did traditionally with Shelby County Schools, where they go classroom to classroom and say, this is how this space has been utilized now. Is that the best, you know, use of that space? What spaces are available as, you know, projections grow? And Nedra's been great, great. She's spent a lot of time, you know, giving the information about projections, and we use those numbers in the conversations about both Lakeland Prep and the middle school. But, this would, this would allow more specific, I think, planning and the decision-making, real-time decision-making, so that you've got a document you're working from. And that's, that's why I'm highly recommending that, you know, we build in this process.
Well, and I think the timing is good as well. There's a lot of, lots of ways to look at it. And essentially, we're looking at changing Lakeland Elementary to a K-34 school in a couple of years for the middle school. And that changes the programming needs of that school. What does that look like? And now is absolutely the right time to be going through that, to make sure that we're meeting those needs as we're making these decisions over the next couple of years. But, as you've said, you and, you and Ms. Jones have been working together previously, and that's what you based your recommendation on for the middle school.
Yeah.
But, but there's a lot of uncertainties. It's what will Lakeland Elementary look like in two years? And what are the programming needs? And what's the best use of class space? And what's the best use of labs? And all those things, which hopefully this process will be very beneficial for.
Well, thank you to you, Ms. Jones. I know that you and Dr. Horle have met quite a bit over the past year in our projections with Lakeland Prep and now with the middle school. So, thank you for all the work you've put into that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And you're, please feel free to.
Yeah, you won't hurt your feelings.
I appreciate you being here.
So, that, no action needed on that, correct, Dr. Horle?
Correct. That's really just kind of letting you guys know what's a process that we intend to carry out as part of our oversight.
Next item.
Next item is discussion action on the LEAP budget, which is the Lakeland Extended Activities Program. As board members of this, it's posted to the website, and I've got it to you late, got it to you today. But, this is essentially, the board has authorized us to move forward with this program. But, this is the special fund that would be used to finance LEAP. It's totally self-sustaining, and that it is a program that's supported by fees, parents, registration fees, and then the art loan fees. And this just gives you an idea of how that money would be spent on the program.
And this is just for?
I do, I do approve of this.
This is just for before, after care. It doesn't include any summertime care. Is that correct? That's still for the long?
That's correct. We still plan at this point on continuing to use YMCA for some program.
It's self-funded, correct?
Correct. So, this is, this is, I'd say it's budget neutral, if anything, you know, because we feel like our programs want to be enhanced, and we feel like this is like the benefits.
Does there a motion to get this item on the floor?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion and further discussion on this item?
No.
Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item.
Next, we have some, well, some policies and other items that were removed from the consent agenda. Discussion action on policy 1.8012, the extended school day. I'm sorry if I misspoke. This was not removed from the consent agenda, but added to the consent agenda. This is the extended school day, 1.8012, and this was a policy that basically needed to be adopted because we wanted to do an art practice here at the house.
Is there a motion to get this item on the floor?
I'm going to want it.
No motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I don't think so.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item.
Next, the discussion action on adopting an annual agenda schedule. And this was basically our policy states, as an organizational tool more than anything, that we adopt an annual agenda to preview the upcoming school year and kind of let us look ahead and see when it's appropriate to address certain items. And Ms. Milhouse has been on the work, and Ms. Harrison did a significant on the work researching. researching other annual agendas to see if we could make one that fit.
I have a couple of questions.
Let's get a motion first. Is there, that's okay. Is there a motion to get this item on the floor?
I'm in motion.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion, a second. Mrs. Henry.
Right now in September, it's standing committee appointments in September. Should that not be in October? Because we have elections since September, would they change some of those appointments?
I think that's very before. Might even be better in November, truthfully, to give everybody that you wanna make at the first meeting, you know, when people are getting sworn in.
Something I saw since I went to the last meeting, so.
And this is also, and I think that's a great point. And I think, I do wanna state, at least my read on this is that this is a fluid, you know, document. So I think adopting it tonight certainly doesn't exclude us from amending it. So that's a, that's a good suggestion.
And then a couple of things that I saw that weren't listed, I don't know if any of them listed or not, was there being two legislative sessions in Nashville, would we not need legislative agenda, uses a calendar marking, so that we're sure to have those on there as well?
I think that's another good height of.
And the TSBA annual convention, would that not be needed on the annual agenda?
I don't think that has to be, because TSBA says that and not us.
Well, the only reason I put that was because the day on the hill is on there. So that kind of.
Very similar.
Very similar.
Very similar. I have no objection to that.
Those were my, the only things that I saw when I was reviewing it.
Would you like to make a motion to make those additions?
I would like to make a motion that we move the standing committee appointments to November. And the legislative agenda, since there's two sessions, we need some of those added to the agenda. But what, once our TLM representative may be better suggesting dates for those.
I think you would wanna continue.
January or February.
Yeah. You could do it December as well.
I would take December. Only reason I would say that because, remember, they'll meet for caucus before they actually go on a session. So there's gonna be some things discussed even before the years of December.
But will we know what bills are out there that we want to go on our legislative agenda?
I think in caucus, that's when they know pretty quickly what bills are gonna be the ones we wanna take some sort of a stance on. So I think December.
That's fine, and if it's not, we can carry it over to January.
And then the TSBA annual convention, probably it's in November. So we have to do the reservations, start the session.
Put it on the September agenda.
Yeah.
Ms. Milhouse would know that better. September, enough time to do all that? Okay. So would you like to restate your motion? So that we all, so that we all understand it?
Okay. Standing committee appointments, move it from September to November. Legislative agenda, is it December?
December.
Yes.
Did that catch both the legislative sessions? December. And the TSBA annual convention for September.
Is there a second, is that a motion? We got a motion, a second. Any discussion on those changes, is that a motion? Hearing none, all in favor of making those revisions, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, or amendment passes. So now we're back on the motion. You almost tripped me off. Now we're back on the motion, which is the actual annual agenda. Any further discussion on the annual agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the annual agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Annual agenda is approved. Thank you, Ms. Henry. Next item.
Next item, discussion action on policy 2.201, line item transfer authority. Discusses the work section out of the opportunity to discuss with the superintendent. This is just adding a line that says, within the state-approved grants budgets that essentially the superintendent can make transfers between major categories as long as they are approved by the state. And then we also added a line that says, any change like that would be brought back to the board at the next meeting.
Is there a motion to get this item on the floor?
I'm in.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item.
Next item is discussion action on school support organization approvals. We have been asked by.
I talked, I, yeah, just, I talked with our, Chris Patterson, our school board attorney, and they're still tweaking it. He asked if we could carry this over to our August agenda. So if there's no objection to moving this to our August agenda, we will just carry this item over to August. Is there any objection? Hearing none, we'll carry this item over until August.
Next, go ahead. Sorry, next is discussion action on the Ethics Committee. Mr. Chairman, that's your right.
That's right. Our policy states that we have an Ethics Committee of three. Two of those members are to be board members, one is to be a citizen. My nominees, as I reported last week from the board, are Ms. Hale and Ms. Henry, and then Mr. Wesley Wright would be the citizen. So the board has to approve those nominations. I don't know that we need a motion to nominate them to report you. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The nominations for the Ethics Committee are approved. Next item.
Next, discussion action on hearing officer selection. I sent the board members information about two candidates, Sam Jackson and Latasha Dexter, that both expressed willingness to serve. Is our hearing officers in the event that they are required?
And this is another item where the board has to approve the nominees. Is there any, and this is a list. We can add to it, we could take, it's not a, it can be, it can be modified at any point.
And it is only one person from that list?
Chair, that question, yeah, it's not a committee that we would select according to who's the most appropriate.
And their availability, there may be a reason why one person can't, one can't, or any number of reasons. All in favor of approving those nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nominations are approved. And I believe that takes us to the September meeting.
That's correct.
Let's make a motion to add this item to the agenda. I'll move that we add discussions, possible action on our September meeting date to the agenda. Can I get a second? We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on this item?
I'll just add some context. I did have a conversation with Chairman Floyd about this. Once I found out that I had to go to Gallowayburg, I checked with the Madison to see if the Tuesday after Labor Day would be available in the chamber. It's actually kind of standard operating procedure for the city of Lakeland anyway. After three-day weekends, we move it to the next available day. So the, I gotta call the chairman of the council. Is available on that Tuesday, September 8. So we actually be back in, you know, back a week previous week.
So, Mr. Superintendent, correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection is our scheduled meeting day would have been Labor Day.
Right.
But because it was a holiday, we moved it to the 14th, or 13th. What's that next Monday? The 13th?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. But you're gonna be out of town the 14th. So now we're, now we're thinking about pushing it back to Tuesday after Labor Day to September 8. The reason why I'm moving it later that week would be because you're gonna be at the conference all week, correct? All right, so discussion on this, just, no, we maybe.
I'd be back Thursday.
Okay. It's Tuesday night.
Laura and I are both in, but it may, we may get done before the end.
What time is the board meeting?
Six thirty. And would it be in the beginning of the year? It may, maybe you can discuss on the board.
I wouldn't think that it will be done. What is, what about Wednesday, the 9th?
It's only funny.
Well, it's all.
That's true, yeah.
For some. There's no work session.
No work session, we just have a meeting, that's right. The 9th would work for me as well.
Well, we could do it, we could do it that first, when is the first?
That's the Tuesday.
The first is Tuesday.
And we could do it that Tuesday, September 1st. Is that any better or worse? Y'all thought I was kidding when I said the hardest thing we do is 5 days. Any objections to September 1st?
So that'll be about, let's see, that'll be. Yeah, it'll be just over, no, almost three days. Oh, I'm sorry, that's three days, yeah, that's it, I'm sorry.
So no objection to the first? I'll make a motion, we move our September meeting to September 1st, which is a Tuesday. Can I have a second? We have a motion, a second. Any discussion on changing September meeting to September 1st? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. September meeting will be September 1st. Same time. About 45. Ms. Hale.
Now, the next month, we have, didn't we move that meeting to not have? Well, the fall break is the 12th, though. So we're still, okay. I was, I'm sorry. I was thinking if we had moved it back some, then it would be a lot of time in between. I didn't know if that mattered, but it's.
You okay?
Okay, yeah. It's fall break, so I thought it was, so sorry.
Okay, that's good. Is there any other business that needs to come before the board? The, did we? Did the, the board evaluation? It was on the consent agenda.
Right, but didn't we, didn't we need to talk about?
We do have to pick a date. We don't have to do that today, though. No, no, you're good, thanks. I won't forget something. So, any further business or announcements? Hearing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.